All right, this is Wednesday, October 21st. This is the regular business meeting for District 96 School Board. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Barsadi?
Present.
Mr. Muirhead?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Here.
And Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Okay, we have four of them.
Okay. At this time, is there any public comment?
I have nothing that was sent to us, no.
Okay. Then at this time, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have a question about the senior government agreement on P102. Notice that there isn't a... Are we going to be voting on that tonight or are we going to just be discussing it? I don't know if that's an action item.
It is listed as an action item. I think it was listed in anticipation that those agreements would be complete. I don't know. Martha, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so we don't have a finalized agreement yet, so we'll talk about that when that agenda comes up, but I would anticipate...
I just wanted to know if that needed to be moved or not.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be moved. We can, through discussion, agree to hold or table it.
Okay. All right, then, the next item on the agenda... Well, I'm sorry, are there any other changes to the agenda? All right, then, if not, the next item on the agenda, then, is the superintendent's report.
All right, thanks, Dan. So, continue to want to update everybody on our return to learn plan. As you know, we are now... I've been in schools since September 2nd, and things, you know, mostly are going well. I'm going to talk about the bumps in the road that we've had that have been communicated to the public already, but certainly want to continue to thank our teachers and our principals and the community in general, because I do believe things are going really quite well when we look at the student learning component. I had an opportunity to walk through all the schools today, and it continues to sort of amaze and amuse me a bit, just, you know, seeing the children doing a great job with their mask-wearing and their social distancing. And I guess the part that always amuses me is when I hear a teacher talking, and I realize they're talking into the computer because they're one of our remote teachers and they're teaching remotely, but you would think when you walk by the classroom that they have a group of students in front of them, and you realize they don't. A group of students are on the Zoom camera with them. So, again, just really thanking our teachers for doing things that I don't think any of them quite anticipated, how they would be doing that, but continue to really do a great job, and our families continue to seem to appreciate it all, so that's wonderful. We have had, as you know, a number of challenges with what is now, by tally, 11 cases of COVID-19, and each one of these has been already communicated to the public and to our entire staff as well. We've had three different students at Ames, two students at Blythe Park, and two staff members at Blythe Park. We've had one student at Central, one student at Hollywood, one student at Hauser, and one district office staff member, all who have tested positive with COVID-19. I think it's really important to point out, though, that through our really in-depth analysis and contact tracing, that we do not have any sense that these cases are linked to any kind of in-school transmission. We've had a couple of cases where they are siblings to each other, obviously, living in the same home, but nothing that demonstrates to us that we have any evidence of in-school transmission. I'll also just note that I think the hiring of the contact tracer position has really been valuable, and to point out to all of you, and I think you all know this already, that the contact tracing and the work of our nurses, I think, really goes beyond even anything that I anticipated around the work of the school district, and in many ways, sort of stepping in for the work of the Cook County Public Health Department around just making sure that we have effectively talked to people even in programs outside of the school, et cetera. So, again, I think it's what's allowing us to keep kids as safe as possible and keep our staff as safe as possible. So even though that's challenging, I describe it as overall, to some degree, things are going well, too, because we're not seeing that transmission. So, our sense is that the mask-wearing and the social distancing and the cleaning procedures and the hand hygiene and all those things that we're required to do, but we're very diligent and insistent on, are indeed working. I know everyone is following, as am I, just the shift in virus metrics that are going on. I think you hear it every time you turn on radio or TV or listen to the news or look at your news feed. Right now, we've been monitoring the suburban Cook County region as our region that sort of seems to most closely mirror what's going on with the virus in our communities. I think today that was at 7.2%. Actually, Northwestern University has also developed a really useful dashboard that makes it very easy to search by local zip code, so we're continuing to look at that daily also. And I believe Riverside, North Riverside, had been at just 5.8% as of today, so that we know that our suburban-specific locations still seem to be lower, obviously, than the suburban Cook County area. I know back in August, we had talked about an 8% metric, because given that the... At the time, that was really what Governor Pritzker had indicated, that an 8% metric would be reason to close schools. Now, not heard anything directly as a school superintendent, but just through the news that the governor had indicated, I believe, yesterday, that he would still look at that as a local school decision. So, again, we'll continue to monitor... I think the other thing that's important is if we hit 8% on a single day, I don't want people to sort of panic and think we're immediately closing doors. I think we would look at a certain number of days and a sense that that is indeed where the virus metric is. So, it's challenging. I know that is not something that any of us were hoping for, but something to some degree that we had been anticipating, that there was a sense as the weather would get colder, people would perhaps be moving more indoors and, you know, other cold and flu season arriving. So, continuing to look at it, and, you know, certainly, we'll kind of stop there if there are other board comments about that or questions about that, if people want to weigh in, certainly to let me know if you have questions or concerns about that.
I just have one. Would this be considering that three days in a row of above eight positivity... Is it similar to what the state is doing? You're looking at multiple days?
Yes, so I think that's the question is... We had discussed the 8%, or we had talked about the 8%, because it's a number the governor had used, and again, I think a single-day metric is hard to look at, that you would... Maybe the three days, I know, is what a lot of sort of programs and communities are looking at. As you know, there's this Restore Illinois document. I went back and looked at it today. It does specifically identify school closure, but then it is not, you know, super clear, crystal clear on what the metrics would need to be. So, I think we continue to monitor really carefully, and we'll be keeping a close eye on that. Anything else about that?
Do you know if the Illinois Department of Health is weighing in? Because I know they have weighed in recently on DuPage County recommending remote learning. Would you consider that in light, something that's likely if we fall into a similar pattern?
Right, so I think what you're saying is Lake County Department of Public Health, as well as DuPage County Department of Public Health, have given advice directly to the school districts in those areas and those counties. We have not heard... I know Pam is also sitting here. We have not heard directly from Cook County Department of Public Health. I know a neighboring school district that was looking at reopening had reached out to them, and at this point, they're not advising school districts directly in that, which is both helpful and not helpful, to some degree, obviously. So, and again, my understanding is from the other county health departments, it's been advising and recommending not requiring school closures, or a shift to all remote or all virtual learning. But again, challenging time, and as I said, promise to keep an eye on that, very close eye on that. Just in terms of other things going on, we had our institute day on October 21st.
I'm sorry, Martha, but before you move on, I'm wondering, are we keeping track of or have we considered keeping track of or using as a metric? I know it was discussed suburban Cook County at over 8% as a proxy for the governor's attention or what they were paying attention to, but I wonder if we've considered or looked at or kept track of, you know, local infection rates, specifically, I think, searchable by zip code?
Right, so that's what we... And actually, this Northwestern University site has made it much easier to do than the case counts per 100,000, so, yeah, so Riverside was at the 5.8, had been previously at 5.23, and I think at just 5.8 today. So, we will keep a close eye on that, and I think that would raise an interesting question for us. We had agreed in August that we would look at the regional number, knowing that we also have a lot of staff coming from outside of Riverside, North Riverside, and Brookfield. You know, again, I know the board had asked back in August if we had a specific metric, and we did identify that 8% as one that we would take that close and careful look at. But is it 8% locally now, now that we have a better way of understanding that number, or is it the 8% regionally? And again, just would want, if the board had a strong opinion about that, to certainly let me know.
You alluded to this, Martha, but the smaller your sort of sample, the smaller the region, the more noise you're going to have in the data, which just means it's just random fluctuation. So, if you look at a very small region like Riverside, that's a small number of people, so only a couple people will change the percentage. So, you'd be careful about using too small of a sample, and so in some ways, using a bigger, you know, regional thing would be more reliable of what actually is happening than using a smaller sample.
Just use that regional number.
I don't know what the region is exactly, but, yeah, you have to be very careful if you're using a small, smaller sample.
The regional number is all of suburban Cook County, so that goes pretty far north and pretty far south from us geographically.
Is it like Region 10?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, for me, I mean, we have so many staff members that come from all around, different suburbs, even, you know, as close to the edge of a border, maybe even not. So, I personally would prefer the region data, because it's not just people in Riverside that are going to schools. We have people driving in from suburbs that have much higher rates than us, and much lower, so I think it's better, in my opinion, to use a regional data.
Appreciate that. Trying to move on to sort of the new normal or somewhat normal activities. We had our institute day on October 13th. It was done all virtually, and thanks to Angela Dozel and to Pam Shaw, who organized the great majority of that, and organized perhaps all of that, I should say, so thank you for that, too. And again, I think that was a successful day, and continuing on with the important professional development and learning for our staff, some of the things that are perhaps annual, but also continue to focus on some of the new technology tools that are so needed right now, as we're working in both our remote learning and also the technology tools that are working well with our students who are here for hybrid learning, too. Also wanted to mention that we have our ribbon-cutting ceremony here, actually, next Thursday, October 29th. It'll be at 3:00. I believe everybody in this room has received an invitation to that, and it will be a rain or shine, outdoor event, mask-wearing, social distancing, and we're right now kind of examining whether or not we can be showing some of our virtual video tours, maybe in this room, and have people come in for short periods of time and stay socially distanced. But we know that there's a lot to celebrate in the work that's been completed, and things really do look great, and it certainly feels still a bit unusual to celebrate it all during this pandemic, but we will. Also wanted to share that October's Principal Appreciation Month, and I know we have a proclamation that the Illinois State Board of Education puts out every year for principals. We won't read it. I think we've read it in years past, but it is there to acknowledge the important work of our principals, and I'm going to say this in a community communication going out probably tomorrow, but I know this group well and just really want to thank them for the hard work that they do always. But particularly this year, reopening our schools in the midst of a pandemic was just a huge challenge, and there were scheduling and staffing and just building setup, et cetera, et cetera, issues, not to mention that they mostly all reopened on the heels of construction projects, too. So, just a thank you to all of them. They're really a wonderful team, and it's really a privilege to work with all of them, and that's, you know, Principal Appreciation Month. I appreciate them every month, but in particular in October, when it's designated to be Principal Appreciation Month. Speaking of October, also in October, the State Board of Ed always releases the state report card. Usually, there's a kind of a lot of mystery around that, and they keep the data embargoed, and they don't release it until October 30th. As you know, we did not do our IAR assessment last year because of the pandemic, so the school designations will remain the same as they were last year. So, I believe that even though there's a lot of detail on what will and won't be in the state report card, the sort of fanfare mystery around it doesn't seem to be quite the same this year. I think mostly they talk about what they won't be reporting on, but did want to make sure that you're all aware of that. And then in terms of other state reporting, we received an annual notification of our Special Education Department and Special Education Programs and Services, all being sort of compliant and appropriately inclusive, et cetera, in terms of least restrictive environment. So, again, no small task in that, but want to thank Pam Shaw for her work and her leadership with our Special Education Program Department and Services. So, that is the superintendent's report. If there are any questions, happy to answer them, and if not, we can move along.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Could the board secretary read the consent agenda for this evening?
Yes, sir. So, tonight's consent agenda includes the meeting minutes for the special board meeting on September 2nd, 2020, the closed session meeting notes from the same meeting, September 2nd, 2020, and the meeting minutes of the regular business meeting on September 16th, 2020, the personnel report as presented, the payables pre-list as of September 30th, 2020, and payables pre-list as of October 21st, 2020, and that is it.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, if there's no discussion, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And wish you guesses.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Riverside Education Council. Does any present anything for that tonight?
No one here, and nothing was submitted to me, so.
Okay. Next, our board member comments. Any board member comments this evening?
I have a silly one. It's more whimsical, so I have a second grader, and today she came home saying that it was the best day of second grade ever, because there was a Road Runner in the back dressed up during their mask parade when they're outside, and she said, "It was the most amazing thing ever," which doesn't seem like they feel to us, but, you know, for a young child, I think that something different and special was brought out, and they had this mascot, and they're all... I think the class is competing to name the mascot. You know, it was just this little simple thing, but I did appreciate... I don't know if it was, you know, Mr. Gadsen, the teachers, or whoever organized it, but it was just this little tiny ray of sunshine that she came home and was so excited. And we have a huge construction project, and the playground's disassembled while they're working on a drainage pipe, so the children are like, "Where's my... Why is my playground being dismantled?" But this little thing was really important for them, so just wanted to say, you know, little rays of hope in this crazy time, and appreciated, so.
That's a great story. That's great to hear.
Apparently, it was dancing and, you know. At least, she said, "I think it was a human dressed up, and I'm not sure." So, it was kind of adorable to see it through their eyes.
Martha, if you can pass along the thanks to the humans and/or Road Runners.
Yeah, I know. But she wasn't part of it.
I have not seen the Road Runner last year, so I'm not...
All right, that is a great story. Thanks for sharing that. Any others... Any other board member comments? All right, if not, we will move on to committee reports. First up is the Policy Committee.
Yeah, I'm going to yield my time back. I don't want to radio all.
All right, that's much appreciated. All right, then, next is the Facilities Committee.
We have a meeting scheduled on the 26th at 3:00. This is just continuing discussions, and then Ramesh is here and is going to talk about the other elements at Central that are still... And I think we'll wait till your moment in business. That's all.
Okay. Next, then, is Education Committee.
Yeah, we had, and maybe Ms. Dulcifer reminded me, who is it that made the video again for our... It was this video kind of showcasing what it's like to be a remote teacher and student versus a hybrid student, and just to give us a peek, and so I encourage you to watch that. It's all posted. But who is it that made the video for us again?
Sarah Hickey.
Sarah Hickey, thank you. And it was great, and so we just had a little peek into what's happening in the classrooms, so if you're curious and want to know, even if you don't have a child here, it's a really great thing to watch, and it was really well done. So, that was our main topic.
All right. Then next is the Personnel Committee.
The only thing popped up here really is just kind of a broad thing, that goals coming up, we've got the kind of ongoing thing with the strategic planning, which is to broaden our school goals for five years, but more of a conversation around the individual goals and just making sure. It seems a little weird being in October already, but we've had a lot of other things going on, so now that hopefully is kind of settling, we can... We need to get together in closed session to kind of flush those out and everything, but just kind of started that dialogue. I know Dan and Martha talked, and then just myself and Martha, just casually about it, and like getting that on the agenda during one of these closed sessions to kind of kick that around and make sure we're aligned with what our more specific goals toward the end of our five-year plan are for this current school year. Nothing else other than that.
All right. Then, next is the Finance Committee.
So, I met for a Zoom meeting with Mr. Fitten and Martha last week, and we just talked about format of looking at the sort of having a good framework for looking at the cost that we have spent on the capital projects and on maintenance, and so Mr. Fitten has made a lot of progress on that, and we're going to look at it, again, I guess, next week, right? And then finalize that, so that was finance.
Okay. All right, then, next, we will go to Old Business. The first item under Old Business is a resolution to move $750,000 from the Operating and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. Is there a motion to approve the fund transfer of $750,000 from the Operating and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund?
Some.
Second. All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay? Wish you guesses.
Okay, next is the Resolution to Move $250,000 from the Working Cash Fund to the Debt Service Fund. Is there a motion to approve the... Board of Education approve the fund transfer of $250,000 from the Working Cash Fund to the Debt Service Fund as presented?
Some.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item? All right, if not, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, wish you guesses.
Okay, next, the approval of Burgland Construction Company change orders. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the Burgland Construction Company change orders as presented?
Some.
All right, and we'll have discussion, yes. Ramesh, you're on.
I'll try and be brief on some of the elements, because there's quite a few items to go through. So, the first one is on the punch list project. We made great progress. We're about 95% through our punch list. We've been held up on a couple of points, mainly because one of the companies is struggling with the COVID crisis. They've had delivery issues, and it really came back to bite us after the completion of the project. This is with regards to some of the window work that we need to get finished at Blythe. But other than that, most of the other punch list items are making good progress, and our plan is to tie that up in the next two weeks. That should pretty much take care of the punch list. Moving on to the remaining construction of what's come up in the last couple of months, I'll start with the Central Exterior Utilities. So, Burgland began the demolition out there because we told them to proceed, because we were trying to beat the winter... We were trying to avoid winter work, so they began the project essentially as a not-to-exceed process, rather than, you know, on a lump-sum basis. So, we are tracking their daily labor and material, and that'll be used to finalize the total change order. But, I mean, everything has... There's always a little hiccup in this project, because MWRD stepped in with changes after the construction started, and this is always a nightmare for us, because changing pipes after construction starts means you already purchased it, you have to find a way of returning it. So, there's a restocking fees and things. These come back to bite us. Unfortunately, it's part of the process, and we are hoping to receive the MWRD permit finally this Friday. But so far, the costs are coming in less than what the not-to-exceed numbers were, because we're tracking it on a daily basis, as I mentioned. And of course, the playground that you mentioned, bad news on that. It's actually rotted away, so when they dismantled it, it just fell apart. So, there's some rebuilding that we'll have to do on that. The water had completely rotted away in the base. Actually, it was structurally unsound. So, Burgland said that they can get some carpentry work done. It'll be part of this not-to-exceed. They will work it through, but it'll be... They'll have to rebuild this at the end of the project. So, it looks like Central's a major construction zone right now, but once we get the MWRD permit, the process should move really quickly. They had planned to do almost 40 days of construction. Based on my last conversation that I had with the construction crew, we're going to cut it down to 20. So, we're going to bring it down in half, and that should work in our favor for the dollar point. But again, there are always new surprises with this project, so I'm not going to give any guarantees at this time. With regards to the sprinkler project, the sprinkler maintenance, again, good news on that front. At Central, there are three major zones in the dry sprinkler zone. We flushed out Zone Number One last weekend, and it's come out clean, so that's... We managed to get that work completed as per schedule. We've got two more zones to go, and we're in the process of procuring the nitrogen generator for the dry pipe system. We decided to do a quick maintenance check on the other sprinkler systems for the schools, so we checked out Ames last weekend as well. Well, that was the best news of all. It looks in great shape, so we're good. Hauser, we took a look in. Again, it's a 70-year-old system, but it's a wet system, so it does not have the same issues that we ran into at Central, but it needs to be flushed. And so, we're going to proceed on a timely basis on that, too, because we have the contract out there. It just needs to get done, because some of the pipes were looking not that great, but in general, the system is functioning, but it needs to be flushed out. It needs to be cleaned, so we're going to get that done. So, that'll take care of the Central Hauser Ames sprinkler systems. Then, I mentioned to Jeff, and I met up with him last week, that we had this issue with the chimney at Hollywood. So, we immediately sent Burgland out there to take a look at it, and it's in pretty bad shape. It is starting to crumble. So, we're going to request... I just got the price in this afternoon on it, so probably have to move it through an emergency process to get going on that one. We're going to bring the chimney down, going to reduce the height down to three feet above the roof level, because it's not in very sound shape right now. It may not last one entire winter. So, we're going to... That'd be an emergency process for that one. We won't be discussing it. I don't have the full detail yet. I just got a lump-sum price on that. I think, yes, that's pretty much it, and... But otherwise, the idea is to get all these projects done before winter sets in, and we should be closed up on that to complete the capital year FY '20 projects before the end of this year. That's the plan.
Can you talk about the other sprinklers at Ames and how at Central? Have you checked Hollywood's or Blythe's?
Hollywood and Blythe.
Oh, yeah.
In regards to that chimney at Hollywood, so you mentioned you have a lump-sum price, but it sounds like you're somewhat reluctant to share it at this time, or...
I could share it. I mean, the thing is, I haven't discussed it. I haven't gone through it. It's about $78,000. It's a big number. Again, because it's an emergency thing, we may proceed on a not-to-exceed again, but the point here is that it needs to get done, and, you know, if we were to go out to bid to get other numbers, we may not get numbers in the next couple of weeks, and we lose in the next couple of weeks and we lose that time and as winter sets and gets more difficult to bring it down. So, and it's really not being used. The chimney has been just standing out there for quite a few years because the boilers systems do not use the chimney.
Any reflection on you or our current architect, but just a couple of years ago, our then architectural firm, we paid them a lot of money to do a life safety analysis of all our buildings. None of these issues that you're mentioning, like the Hollywood chimney, as far as I know, were noted. The fact the sprinkler systems are not functional at Central was not noted. I mean, it makes me a little bit concerned about where we stand with that life safety report and what did they do? I mean, these are things you're finding them left and right, it seems to me.
Right. I mean, I have read through their reports, but in general, what we recommend is that every five years, a school district should run through a life safety system, at least an update you should review it. It's very important because systems get old over time and it's very easy to forget that something that was 20 years old last time and now has passed its service life and needs to be replaced. So those are items that do come up. There will be new items that will come up.
But the chimney didn't degrade in the last two years. It's at a point where it's ready to fall down and the sort of the sediment in the sprinklers, that didn't happen in the last two years.
No, it didn't.
I'm very puzzled by.
Were those things just not on the list? I mean, if you can go back and look, it'd be very interesting to see.
I would assume the sprinkler system would be something they would look at.
No, I was kind of saying the same thing because we paid to have that done on every school.
So I mean, you know, we paid a lot of money for that and it's, and again, it's not, nothing to do with you or the current architectural firm, but it does make me wonder what they actually did. I mean, what else, what else didn't they look at? If that's the right way to phrase that.
I think the chimney is interesting, but I, with the sprinkler system, I don't know that it's common to remove the heads though, even when you do sprinkler system checks.
For a safety check?
Yeah. For a safety check, you run a main drain test, you make sure that the water flow, the water pressure and everything is working. Sometimes you'll go through and check some random heads, but it's not really common practice to actually like remove the heads in the capacity that we did here, which I think was kind of what you were explaining to us last week, is a little bit unique. We actually pulled one out and there was sludge on the inside. The only way to know that is to pull the head out, so.
And also the 70-year-old system, I mean, I hope that that question would have come up, that they would have known.
So they're, yeah.
Because they, it's my question, why weren't you checking for that?
Yeah. So maybe they could have been more thorough.
This is nothing for Roberto to answer because he wasn't there. But it's, I think you can see it's a frustration for us when we paid for this check, so we don't really know what else is missing. So I totally agree with that. I was kind of, I was the same thing.
And Ramesh, we can give you that specific report, right? It is a 10-year submission. It was submitted in 2016 and it was my first year here with a different architectural firm, but we can take a look at that overall. I mean, I, Ramesh and I are having sort of a similar conversation just before the meeting of, you know, how do these things come up? Is this typical or is this very atypical in a school district that certainly has some aging facilities? But is it because we did all this work in renovation, so there's this more specific focus on things?
Probably. That's probably true because we focused on our capital improvement rather than capital maintenance. So capital maintenance is a different aspect. So part of a life safety report or a cap report is you break down the report into five categories. There are what they call code violations and life safety. There's building maintenance, there's building upgrades, there's ADA. So you go through this process of categorizing, then you give priorities, one, two, three, four, and then you decide in the next three-year plan, I need to do all my item number ones. The next five years, I do number twos. That way you build up a process. That way you have a regular capital maintenance plan for the next 20 years. You can build a 20-year process. So there are no surprises. Like this is a surprise. I mean, we are spending a lot of money on this process. It shouldn't have happened. We should have known we could maintain this process, but I'm glad we caught it and we fixed it.
Most definitely.
Very important that we fixed it.
Most definitely.
We're sending a memo on this one out shortly, so to show the work that was completed so that the board is aware of what the sprinkler system upgrades, the fixes were, so.
It makes me wonder if we need to have a more rigorous review of all of our facilities because you're sort of finding these things as they come along.
Yes, you do.
But you're not, you're not like doing a sort of.
Sorry.
It just, you know, it just seems like we're finding these things where you're looking and, but you're not looking everywhere. So I just wonder if like, you know, how much confidence we should have on the Leggett report from 2016, what else is not on there? I mean, we, so should we be doing a sort of systematic review of all the buildings and say, hey?
I think to your point, if we follow the recommendations, which we should, every five years, so we should be doing a report next year and we should make sure that it's, maybe it needs some extra review in terms of who's doing the work and that they have appropriate oversight.
Well, I guess my question is going to be your point, Jeff, is that, I mean, we're in this situation now. I think we need to go back to the company that did this and find out why.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think we should be letting this, I mean, we paid money for it and, I mean, I can understand the sprinkler system, but the chimney is pretty obvious. I mean, it's not like it's in underneath ground or anything like that. I mean, it's very obvious, so.
Yeah, I mean, we have recommendations on propping doors open during recess, on wall decorations, on paint chips. I mean, just things like that, the largest thing to miss. So, yeah, I'd really like to go back and read that report again to see where it's at.
Is that something that could be sent out to the board again, perhaps?
Jim, I don't, you were mentioning that maybe there was tuck pointing for the Hollywood chimney listed through, I don't know if you're.
There's a lot of various tuck pointing in the list and there is a line for the chimney. So someone noticed it needed to be on the list. I don't know, I'll look up what the priority was at the time. I just looked at the schedule that we laid out and it is, it's on our long-term schedule for fiscal year '22, so, you know, 15 months from now or so.
So I guess it was somewhat, it sounds like some parts of it were on the report, but it hadn't been approved yet or we hadn't, it hadn't come into focus yet? Is that what I heard there?
When we go through the budget, then I do the plan. And of course, if bills see something, then we get a quote right away and look at it. And actually, we're in the process of getting a separate one for that. We have a contractor that does a lot of tuck pointing and every summer, we try to go around and get the most critical parts. So it was in the report and, but, you know, when we're planning our summer, that's when we go around and look and see what jumps out and refer back to this. So I don't know if it deteriorated quickly since that report was done, but it was on the list. So we might have got there right after, after it needed to be done, but it's on our radar.
No tuck pointing was done on that chimney at all?
I'm sorry.
No tuck pointing on the Hollywood chimney at all, I know it's hard to hear from down there.
Has any been done? I don't think any went done on that one. I know we did the one in Central.
Why would it be ready to, ready to go and should have been done, I suppose?
But I think just to interject, when we do the November COW, this is part of what Jeff and Jim have been discussing and I know Jim then has been discussing with Ramesh and with DLA, is making sure that we have this clear, long-range maintenance plan set out for both financial reasons as well as priority around maintenance. So we have the report from DLA from the 2017, 2018.
February 2018, yep.
And then I think, you know, Jeff, what you're referring to is also the health, life, safety report from Leggett and the DLA report did encompass, they kind of accepted the health, life, safety report from Leggett and embedded it in that overall analysis. But that is, I think we can bring much more detail to the November COW in terms of both the anticipated projects as well as the financial scenarios surrounding all of them. So, you know, I agree, we feel like we're in this mode of discovery and it's been frustrating for everybody and I know for the board to be asked to make these, you know, approve these actions on things that really feel quite urgent and quite expensive after having just done all the capital improvements. So it is very much a work in progress and I think we can bring much more detail to our next meeting.
Well, I, I'm sorry, one last question on that and Joel, you haven't chimed in, so hopefully this is not potentially a problem, but I do wonder with the, making changes to the chimney, does that, does that cause any kind of issue in terms of changing the appearance of the building or problems with the historical aspect of things?
Yeah, Sam Brookfield, we'd have to check with them.
Mm-hmm.
It's not gone by Riverside, it's by Brookfield, but I don't believe Hollywood falls in that category, but I can confirm that tomorrow. But the chimney is, I mean, we'll have to do something about it.
Mm-hmm.
And rebuilding will be much more expensive, of course.
Yeah.
Isn't that necessary?
Well, it's not being, it's not functional, it's just, it's there and you want it to maintain its appearance, but we, yeah, to rebuild would be, I don't think that's cost effective in my opinion.
I'm in total agreement. I'm in total agreement.
Not to say this as a suggestion or a solution or anything like that, but I don't know if the insurance company has their own risk control engineers or if they partner with third-party risk control services or anything, but I mean, that's a lot of stuff that my company does with checking life safety and doing some of the recommendations and everything. So we might, that should be, we provide it in some cases as a free service, so there might be some options that we can look there that aren't going to cost us more money, just as a more broad kind of umbrella on this topic.
To work with our liability and insurance?
Property insurance.
Property insurance, okay.
It's a good idea, definitely. And I'm sorry, Ramesh, going back to the issue with Central and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation, can I say it? Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. I'm wondering, so it sounds like you said they stepped in with recommendations for changes after we had started. I mean, was that something that was anticipated or their approval was thought to be perfunctory or could, just do elaborate a little more on that, how that worked out?
Okay. So we issued drawings on the subject, finalized drawings after finishing investigations as to, Rumbaya told me we had to separate the combined sewers into separate storm and sewers systems on 9/20, on the 20th, we issued drawings. The same time a construction set went to, a permit set went to the village and one went to MWRD. MWRD takes their time. I mean, they'll not turn it around and give it to you in a second. So WT, who was our engineer, civil engineer, has been pursuing this process with them. We got a preliminary report back from them towards the end of the month, November 30th. And at that time, we sent out that set to Burgland and said, price this, because we've got some comments back and we priced out, they said that's what they had initially submitted, which I told you we were going back and forth on the price on because we thought it was high. The village came back with their own comments, so that means they modified the drawings again and you won't believe it. Today, just this morning, MWRD came back with more comments, you know, so three sets of comments. We're hoping that this will be the final set by this Friday, but you can always have a surprise. In fact, the village changed the pipe sizes on us and the type of pipes after we submitted the drawings to them. These are all big changes, they just keep coming, but we wanted the work to start because of the winter season coming in, which will make the cost probably expensive.
And Ramesh, what kind of date time do you guys need to purchase the pipes?
Five days.
Five days?
Yes. The problem is the.
Why would they purchase, you just said assume that they would be approved?
Correct. Yeah. The problem really is the storm structures, the actual catch basins that are installed in the ground. There are pipes that connect to them. So if you do not know the size of the pipe or the location, the depth of the pipe, you cannot make the fittings correctly.
Yeah.
That's the problem. So we need an entire system to be set up. So that's why they finished the demolition. They're actually ready to start excavation right now, but they said if they open a hole in there and it rains, we'll end up flooding it. And these are deep holes, they're going to structurally stabilize the ground. We're digging almost 10 to 12 feet down.
Yeah, I'd be, yeah, I'd like to know the kind.
Yeah.
What was the, what were the unexpected changes to MWRD?
They made us change the types of pipes. We had RCP, the reinforced concrete pipes. The village actually switched it to plastic, to PVC pipes, number one. It's cheaper. It's good. It's good for us in a way, but the fact is the contract had actually purchased the RCP and had it delivered to site. And then he said, now I've got to return all this. So luckily, he can, it's restockable, but we had to pay a small fee for it, so that was okay. But then MWRD has also stepped in and said they want us to change some what they call inwards. The inwards is the lowest elevation of where the pipe connects. They want us to change it because there has certain slopes they want us to maintain, there's certain sized pipes, and we, those are changes that if they change, the structure changes. We do not want to make the structure and then change it because it gets wasted. We've already wasted three structures because we recall, we started this project in July when we had the first change, when you were trying to avoid the tree, went between, we ordered the pieces and then we found out that the line's flawed. It's become a major project. It went from being part of our base contract and now it's a standalone contract.
I have a question. I mean, I do project management and I mean, I understand changes come through, but this just seems really ridiculous that we get changes all the time from places that are supposedly approved. I mean, that, I mean, why do they keep coming back to us saying, make these changes, make these changes?
It's just the way, the basis of how MWRD works. I mean, you are beholden to their process and they always have the last say. If you recall, the changes they made us do on the zoning out here at Ames, if you remember, we had gone through our permitting process in January, we were done. And by April, they came and made us change the permeable pavers out here, which we had to meet with the zoning department.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm not arguing with you. It just, it doesn't make sense to me. I'm trying to rationalize. There has to be some reason for the process and I just, it doesn't seem to, it seems like it's more just bureaucratic, quite frankly, than, I don't see, I don't see the justification for doing that.
Part of it is that, yes. It's, but it's the way, I mean, if you recall, if you had done just the base contract work, you'd have been in violation because of the fact that we could not connect the storm sewer the way it was designed. They would have told us that, they wouldn't have allowed us to complete the project. They would have said this is a violation. So we had to go back and redesign and they have their, pound of flesh is the way to put it. They allowed that, they come back and make changes.
Overall, I think you mentioned there are a couple of places of good news that things are coming in at least less expensive than originally.
Absolutely. Yeah. The sprinkler maintenance, for example, initially was almost close to 200,000. We're going to be significantly less than that. Oh, yes. Because as I said, we are monitoring the labor sheets per day on a daily basis.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is there any further discussion?
No, we're just talking about very importantly until we get the final, final. So we don't have to return any more things.
No.
It's really sad. I agree with Mr. Barsadi on that one. Thank you very much for dealing with all that.
Yes. I returned something to Lenzin the other day, they gave me 10% off. Doesn't work the same apparently with pipes. Oh, well. All right. Let's see. So any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah, so there was a lot there. So we're voting on I-3, which is the sewer, sump pump, utility relocation and the sprinkler maintenance.
Yes.
Just those three things, because there's a lot of other stuff that he said there. So just to clarify that.
That's true. We did get a lot tracked.
Just those three things are what we.
All right. That's a good idea to clarify that, definitely. All right. Let's see. So if we're ready to vote, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Marhol?
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Miller, or excuse me, Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, next item is the approval of DLA Architects Additional Services. Let me pull that up, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve DLA Architects Additional Services as presented?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
They're basically charging seven and a half percent of the construction.
That's seven and a half percent of the items we just approved?
Of, of various changes.
Various changes, okay.
It's, it's, the changes are listed in the-
Not just Central, there's a few others, thank you.
It's Ames, I'm not going to read it all, but it's work at Ames, it's work at Blythe, Blythe work was only sixteen hundred dollars, and then a lot of what we just talked about for Central, plus some interior work. All of it's work that Remesh has already discussed, this is just, this is the architectural fee.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next item is the approval of zoo parking space lease. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the Chicago Zoological Society for the use of up to ten parking spaces in the Brookfield Zoo main south parking lot for Hollywood Elementary School teacher parking as presented?
So moved.
Aye.
Martha, is there any background on this you'd like to present?
So, as you know, this is something that, actually, we had reached out to the zoo just, just prior to the pandemic, and then there was a bit of a delay because of all of that, as you know, we had this goal of separating play and parking in the Hollywood school campus, just like we have in our other schools as well. So our idea was that we would, you know, ideally like to have this configuration of some spaces at the zoo, small number of spaces on the actual parking lot at Hollywood School, and then we still would like to reach out to the village of Brookfield to see if we can obtain some all-day teacher-only staff parking in front of Hollywood School. We think then that would allow us to, I think it's about eight spaces in the Hollywood School lot, which would allow us then to really make improvements in the playground area, not have kids playing between parked cars during recess, and move forward with the multipurpose room project as well. So this is just a real, an agreement that I just think fits really nicely with our, our overall goals for separating play and parking and making the improvements we want to make at Hollywood School. So appreciative of the, of the zoo to, to offer this, this opportunity.
I think I remember in email, you were saying they had, they had acquiesced on like one or two items that we'd asked them about?
Yeah, so you had asked if they, you know, why did they really need to collect driver's license numbers, and they did remove that from this agreement. We had also asked to see if we could have a multi-year agreement, they really don't want to enter into a multi-year agreement, but they shared that they had this, I think, the same agreement or similar agreement with Riverside Brookfield High School, and it has been, I want to say somewhere between fifteen and twenty years. So they really, you know, they were certainly very reassuring about the longevity of an agreement and being able to roll it over year to year, but it was just how they preferred to, to do business and make the agreement.
You want to comment, maybe one of those emails was around like, unless there is a change to our long-term parking strategy or something, is that something they're considering, or I, I guess that kind of threw me off as to why, or if that was just like a catch, you know, just to make sure, I don't know.
Yeah, she did mention sort of a long-range facilities plan, and I said, do you think it would impact the, you know, parking spaces nearest Hollywood School? And she said that she really did not think so.
I guess, I, that's, this is what's concerned, is my main concern with this lease, is that it's like this year to year, even though, it's different saying like, I think it was like fifteen to twenty years for the high school, this is a thirty-year lease we have with Hollywood, so we sort of have to plan for thirty years, and that's the way I'm approaching this. I, I do think we do, when we start discussing with the village, with the village of Brookfield for street parking, I would like us to start coming up with contingency plans, because year to year, I mean, this could change next year. And so I would just like to come up with like some sort of plan that if we do lose these parking spaces, that we can at least execute on, on that, sort of like mitigate our risk, because I don't want them to have ten spaces and having teachers, maybe then sort of scramble to figure out what we're going to do. And so I, I just, just more, just so that we're not caught off guard if that should happen.
I think that's what the challenges in that area, we're so landlocked over there, and so kind of hemmed in by-
Right.
-other entities, that, you know, if it were to fall through, I agree that maybe you'd hope to settle that with street parking, or, you know, we then turn around and have to park on, on playground area that we've, we've then developed, but it's-
But that, but then that would go against our lease, and so-
Unless we parked in our, what is formerly the school property.
Right.
But, yeah.
So, so all I'm asking is that we just, as we continue down, this is now the Brookfield, Village of Brookfield's sort of last piece, that I, I do think we do need to sort of come up with some sort of plan that if we should lose the parking with, with the zoo, that we have a contingency plan that we can go to. I mean, ideally, I'd like to say, ask the village of Brookfield that if we do lose those parkings with the zoo, that they will then give us ten spaces for that, so that we can, so that we're not scrambling and having teachers park.
I agree with you, and in fact, I think that's a win-win across the board, I mean, Riverside and Brookfield have dozens and dozens of miles of streets that are already there, they're already paid, they're already paid for, that, you know, why don't we park on the street? It's not because people can't walk a block or two, I mean, it just, to me, since we already have this infrastructure, why don't we use it? Why do we spend so much money going to park lots and all, and all the rest, I mean, is this crazy, just crazy? So I agree with you, yes, we could get more spaces, more spaces from Brookfield, I guess.
I, I would agree, we, we could at least make it part of the negotiations, whether they agree to- Putting a contingency plan into writing or not, I guess we'll see, but it doesn't hurt to ask, start the conversation.
Because quite frankly, if we do lose parking spots, we, we are going to be very stuck.
Yeah, especially if we build a building on it.
Right. Building on it.
Unless you want to put a garage door in there and use that multipurpose space for parking.
Well, we could do underground parking, and make that cool.
Yeah, underground parking is very formal, it's very affordable.
I don't know, Dave, how, how big's your driveway?
Maybe like four, five or so.
Yeah, it could be like reggae, you can just, five dollars, you can park it.
All, all that being said, I am still very appreciative of the zoo, I think they were sincere, and I really appreciate Barsadi going through this process with them and finding a creative solution that's reasonable for the teachers nearby, it's a reasonable way for them to get to the classroom, so I, I do feel their sincerity from the letter that we have, and that's all we do have, but, I'm not against long-term solutions, but I am thankful that we have something, and that they have proved themselves to be a long-term contractor, that's a good thing.
And I think if, if it happens where we're not allowed, because they have changed their long-term plan, there's going to be a lot more issues than our ten teacher cars, the RV students, so I'm sure there'll be a lot of contingency planning going on if that happen, you know, so, I, with those entities, I don't think it's-
Right.
-in their best interest.
No, and I, but I guess what I'm trying to say is-
Yes.
Sort of prevent that from happening, because I don't know if there's a contingency plan-
Right, 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 yes.
For that, I would just sort of like us to be prepared that should that happen, that we can then, like if the village of Brookfield said, okay, if we lose it, they'll give us ten more streets to park in spaces, that we're not having to be part of that discussion, we're not scrambling to have to negotiate with all the other entities that are also trying to scramble their time.
I know, in the Hollywood form, I was actually very impressed and thankful that many of the Hollywood residents that lived on adjacent streets were very open to parking on the street, which is very generous, so I did appreciate that they were just commenting that would be even possibility, which is not always the case, you don't always have residents that are so willing to participate, so I thought that was a relief. Kind of, just a lovely surprise, which I appreciated, so I think we'll be all right, we'll work out when it comes to that, so.
We can just pretend we're RV students if I tell those passes, when that happens, right, because those are not hard to come by. Clearly kidding.
All right, is there any further discussion on this item? Are we ready to vote? All right, Kathy, can you go roll?
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the D one oh two COVID screening partnership, Martha, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, so, we talked about this at our last meeting, and the board had sort of through consensus directed me that this was a likely scenario, that we wanted to sort of begin to work through next steps and, or, or needed steps, I shouldn't really even call them next steps. And one is to come to a formal intergovernmental agreement with LaGrange Brookfield District one oh two, which has actually proven to be more challenging, not because of LaGrange Brookfield one oh two at all, they've been really wonderful and very neighborly, and are very interested in, in setting up this agreement and sort of creating capacity within their local lab, if this is something that we indeed intend to pursue. Like many things, it's, it's all within the details, and in particular, making sure that we have the appropriate designation and description and agreements with our liability insurance provider, as well as their liability insurance provider. So there are just a number of details that still need to be worked through, and then I think for the board to understand that, you know, in any situation, there are some risks involved, you know, we know that even just opening our doors for returning to learn is, presents a certain set of risks too, so, so what I'd like to do is just have more time to be able to bring you more information specifically to the insurance agreements, or the insurance agreements that may or may not be appropriate or needed for this, but just still additional research is needed in that area. So what I do have for you is we were able to work through a consent waiver form that staff and students, or parents of students would use if they were interested in participating. We've developed a frequently asked questions piece of information that I've attached there for all of you also, so we're, we're, we're sort of moving forward as if this is our plan. We've been talking that November would be sort of just around the holiday time, hopefully a good time to do this level of surveillance screening. So I'm, what, what I, I just don't have the actual agreement, so there really is not a formal action for the board to take tonight. We had hoped that we would have the agreement ready for your review, but just timing and the number of people involved in reviewing it and creating it has, has proven to be more problematic than we thought. But certainly continue to welcome the conversation if there are answers that I can provide to questions, perhaps not so much about the insurance, where we don't have all the answers we need yet, but if there are other questions or just more discussion that the board wants to have on this topic. I think that's really where, where we are. I know, Dan, you and I have talked about whether or not we would want to potentially even schedule a special meeting of the Board of Education to formally act on this, when we have the proposed agreement for the board to consider, or we could convert the November fourth Committee of the Whole Meeting into a special meeting, which would allow the board to potentially take action on this item. So I don't think November fourth puts us really too far behind in terms of our process. We know that, again, if we decide to pursue this, there's still a number of just processed up supply, ordering some capacity building that they're still doing over at the District one oh two lab, so there's still work in progress, and I think, I think, you know, optimistically, we could still kind of hit that target of having this as an option for staff, stu, staff and students, particularly around the holiday time. I'll add, you know, the other piece that's sort of somewhat complicated is the, the virus metrics, right? I mean, the virus metrics, I think, of course, make it feel more important that we would have a surveillance, you know, screening tool, but if the school district were to be put on some kind of pause, would that obviously created other issues potentially around the screening? So, like everything this year, there's a lot of factors to be considered, and it's a dynamic process that seems to be ever-changing a bit, but anyway, the, what hasn't changed is District one oh two being very sort of willing and interested in being a partner with us on this. They have, I think, just gotten clearer and clearer around their procedural pieces, and sort of what's, what's working, and how to refine the process. I know they did share that, whether it was late last week or early this week, they did have two asymptomatic cases that were identified through their surveillance screening. So I think they are feeling that it is very valuable for them. I just talked to the superintendent there again today, and he shared with me also that the, the number of participants have actually increased over time, both staff and students. And I said, you know, why do you think that is? And he said, I think initially there were a lot of worries that maybe it would, it could have potentially created false positives, and that families would be potentially presented with data that's like, what are you telling me? You know, I now have to go get a COVID test, nobody's been sick in the family, and that has not proven to be true, that their, their findings, as you know, of this sort of COVID-like clinically significant resembling COVID, I think Jeff, you mentioned this last time, have been one hundred percent consistent with actual COVID diagnos, confirmed by actual COVID diagnostics. So I think you also know that LaGrange, or I guess LaGrange one oh five, the titles of the school districts always are, it's LaGrange and Brookfield and LaGrange Park, et cetera, have, have just now started, I think it was last week, in the surveillance screening process.
Could you remind us, because I've forgotten about the size of LaGrange one oh two and one oh three compared to us, I couldn't remember their-
Yeah, so LaGrange one oh two is about three thousand students, so bigger than us, almost double.
Almost double.
And then LaGrange one oh five is almost exactly our same size, we're very comparable in terms of, in terms of size.
Thank you, I just couldn't, I couldn't remember their specifics, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for pursuing that, Martha, you said one oh five is about ready to start testing?
They start, they started, I think it was last Saturday or Sunday, they did like a, kind of a screening roundup where they did it outdoors and asked families to come in and participate. I know it was, it was on CBS Local News, I believe they did a brief piece on-
Do they have an agreed, a formal agreement with one oh two yet, or not?
I don't know what their specific agreement is.
Okay. I guess my only comment about this is that, you know, this is something where it is extremely important that we do this, and, and it's also very important that it be done as expeditiously as possible, especially given the fact that, as you said, that the COVID numbers are rising around country, and locally. So it makes it even more important, so while I understand the lawyers are always wanting, you know, dot every i and cross every t, of course, we, in an ideal world, we would as well, but we are living in a pandemic, we have risks, as you said, no matter what we do, and I think this is something that's just very, very important for our staff and for our students, so I would just encourage you to move the process as quickly as, as you can.
Yeah, I, of course, we also, thinking about the holidays, and some people, depending on their travel habits, it would be very helpful to know if we've had high viral asymptomatic cases when we return from holiday experiences, and whether people stay home or travel, I just think it would be the perfect time for us, whether it be late November or mid-November, to get that in place, so that, you know, I don't know what the metrics are going to do, but at least we have preparations in place to be prepared to kind of keep track of those. We're not going to obviously give a diagnostic test, a PCR test, but this is such an important way to screen for those high cases that really could impact classrooms, teachers, you know, we just don't know. So I do appreciate all the work you've put in, I know it's extra, and I agree that as quick as possible would be ideal.
I, I don't, I mean, there's no doubt that it's, it's bad for the kids. I, I just caution that we shouldn't move too fast where we're not making sure that we're dying the eyes and causing disease. And yes, this is a pandemic, but there are some, there were some specifics in there that we really need to look at, and I'm going back and forth still. There's some specifics that we really need to look at to make sure that we do this right, and not just do this because, you know, this is the only thing available. And so I just want to make sure, well, I, I think testing is very important, I think we need to make sure that we're doing it correctly, thoughtfully, in the best interest of the district. And so I, I, that's all I must want to say, I mean, I guess I think it's important, but I don't want to rush the process too fast, because this is very important, we need to do this right, not just do it, but do it correctly.
Well, I was going to say, Martha, I did really appreciate those frequently asked questions, and that's sure for using some things that worked for one oh two, but, you know, I, I work with children, and having answers for parents to educate about what the process would look like is so important. And I really appreciate having something for them to go to on paper that they can look at, so there aren't kind of questioning about procedure, or what does it feel like, or what do I do with my child's test, or what's going to happen. So I think that's just an important educational piece that I appreciate, having that you already got.
Well, one of the things that, again, it's sort of operating on the assumption that we're going to move forward as we, you know, I, I think, I do not think these are insurmountable barriers around key agreement, it's ultimately up to the board to decide, but, you know, I was talking today, just to the superintendent, I said, you know, what about collecting all the saliva samples at home? I think they're doing their saliva samples at home K through six, and then their middle schoolers are doing their sample collection at school. And I said, what if we just started everybody at home? And he said, the only thing is, not everybody returns, but he said, actually, they have found that they're getting better compliance by doing some of it at school. So, again, these are, these are more operational details, but I just want you to understand that, because that is, that's the level of our conversation, is really as if moving toward, you know, how to operationalize this and make, and make this happen.
So it sounds like you're thinking about the operational side and getting those pieces in place as you, as you continue to make sure the legal agreements in place. I mean, are you, is that, is that correct understanding that?
Yeah, I mean, I had a parent communication potentially ready to go tomorrow, you know, again, preparing all this, that I knew that, you know, really first step is obviously board approval, which now relates to these insurance agreements. But then it's really obtaining the consents and waivers from both staff and from students. It's kind of simultaneously ordering all the supplies and materials. Right now, it seems to be that these things are available, that that's not going to be a problem. Our tech team has already been connecting around just creating that sort of confidential labeling and coding of all of the samples. And then, you know, really District 102 is ready to, for our samples to come to their lab for processing. We haven't been thinking internally about the different sort of role and functions. Our nurses are very busy managing COVID and managing sort of the day-to-day details of school operations. So, you know, we've been looking at what other support might we need in terms of administrative, administrative support staff? Do we even need sort of a, what I'll describe as maybe minimum wage, somebody can, you know, drive our samples over and things like that? So we have been thinking into the sort of depth of details around all of this. And again, I just, I want to, I've said this multiple times, I'll continue to say it, that an absolute bright spot in this pandemic has been the professional collaboration among superintendents, that these are colleagues that I have met at professional meetings, et cetera, over the course of several years. But the effort, the desire, the, the true collaboration and sharing of ideas and expertise and how do we get kids and staff, you know, how do we, how do we educate children during our pandemic is just our core priority and focus right now. And I'm so appreciative of not just the superintendent and District 102, but really so many superintendents in our area who've just been a great team. So, yeah, so yes, we're, we're, we're in, we're in deep in the thinking and the planning. It's really a question of, are we going to say go and, you know, and when do we say go?
I have to say though, as a parent, I personally, like, you know, you're dealing with like a rapper screening and worried, we're at a new entrance now in the morning because construction. But I have to say, the parents have really, I mean, the caregivers, whoever they be, have really stepped up. I really have seen people have been able to pivot and I'm personally proud of our community for changing with this and that and really being flexible because we're all dealing with, you know, is your, is your, I've had charge every day and that's something we're not used to doing. We're not used to bringing them every day and this little kid with their backpack out with all their things. And even the children have been really responsive. So I personally feel we're ready for it. I think it's just about education and are we prepared?
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I know it's a little bit broader issue than the, just the COVID screening, but I name the collaboration with other professionals outside of our district, but our families have been outstanding. When I think about the fact that we are on this very limited schedule, that our elementary and our middle school children are on different schedules and that people really just seem to be flexible and appreciative and everybody's working so hard to make this work. So absolutely.
Martha, not to add to your work too much on this, but when this is presented, I definitely would appreciate your helping me for my decision. Some sort of an idea of what the costs or associated costs would be. I think you mentioned there might be someone we need to hire for driving, as well as very minimal, but an idea, and I'm sure the agreement will probably tell us most of this, but an, an idea of what exactly we are committing to and, you know, what are the limits, what are the bounds, what's the scope of this agreement, the scope of this program?
Right. And I think one of the things, and actually, as our attorneys have reviewed this too, they think the cost seems very favorable. And, you know, they're able to compare this to other, whether it's the quick tests that are out there, other diagnostic tests, or other school districts, we know, looking to enter into testing agreements, not specifically with 102, but other, other companies are starting to come online now with, with options. And this is far less expensive. And I think that really is that effort to sort of keep this a very neighborly agreement, for lack of a better term. So it is that $11 per test per person. We won't know that actual number of participants until people sign off on the consents and waivers, but we're, we're using a similar estimate. You know, if we were to be at that roughly 75% of participation. There is a question if we would split an additional PCR machine with the district, that would be written into the agreement. And that's something that's being contemplated right now. And then absolutely the additional staffing, I mean, it is something Jim and I have talked about and, you know, whether or not we can free up some of our staff to just sort of have different roles and functions, certain days of the week or certain hours of the day. It's something we're, we're looking at and looking to understand. But I know we had just a conversation the other day about if we're going to start paying staff overtime to do additional work, are we better off to bring in other staff at sort of essentially straight time hourly to do some of these functions? And that's, that is part of what we're trying to figure out. That is part of what LaGrange is working on figuring out with us. So, so all those details, we can certainly make, I think, a very good estimate on that for the board to consider. I don't see that as being a significant cost. I see that as being some additional incidental costs.
So just with, with that said, I think I just want to echo what Dave was saying. Like, I'm not opposed to going forward with this, but I just, I, there's so much unknown right now. It just, it makes me a little uneasy on voting on something without having that stuff straightened out. And I don't, I don't think this is a, this isn't like a miracle cure or a solving. We're not going to be removing masks and standing next to each other and packing classrooms because of this test. It's just one more thing. So everything's, so far seems to be working good. We have not had, or working well, we have not had any kind of inner classroom transmissions. I agree with the cold season thing.
You don't have that, but.
With the.
You don't test anybody. I'm just saying, you can't prove.
No, we can't prove anything, but so far our contract chasing has not shown that any, any kind of in-class, and I don't, I don't think doing, doing this testing is going to prove that that is happening either. So, and I do think there is a real legal risk to doing this. Our insurance likely will not cover this. We've had several claims turned into my company. I'm sure you guys have read about it in the paper. We have denied every single one. We've won those court cases. This stuff is not covered in insurance policies. It can't. It's, you, you cannot afford to pay insurance costs for this kind of coverage. I think one of the stats that our, our senior leader shared is the entire industry is less than a billion dollars and it would be two and a half trillion, two and a half trillion dollars to cover pandemic losses. So we would have to, we'd have, we'd need two and a half more times capital in the entire industry just for pandemic coverage. And that's not even for anything else that we cover. So there, and because you can't prove anything, I think it's hard to say we are liable, but there also could be a lawyer that's very good at arguing that because of X, Y, and Z triangulated means, and even if we get out of it, it, you know, I don't know what that costs. I mean, is that?
To me, it's a very similar image of that, of that situation. If, if, if there's something that can be reasonably done at a reasonable cost to improve the safety of the staff and the students, and we decline to do it, that seems to me like a liability.
Is it, is it actually improving though?
Is what?
Is it actually improving the safety? I mean, do we know that it's impacting the safety?
They were removed, have all high viral cases from that experience in person, which I think is, you have to assume.
I don't, I don't think you assume anything in this current situation.
They're not, they were proven to be known cases.
They were proven to be known cases, but I think there's also arguments to say if you were wearing a mask and you were socially distanced from that person, you also would not have transmitted it. So I don't know that the test is proving that the spread, it's preventing spread. Again, I'm not opposed to going forward with this. I just think we need to have, I, I don't think this is something that we're in a dire need of rushing through.
I, I don't think it's, it's a dire need, but I do think that it's, it's the faster we can get it done, the more safe our students and staff will be. I would say that, you know, there's a liability question of the insurance, but again, I, I'm having a hard time understanding if we make it clear, as these documents do, and as, as Martha's sending out emails to this, to the community, that these are screening tests, these are not diagnostic tests. If you don't hear back from the district, don't assume that your student doesn't have COVID. We're not saying that. A couple of people a week might get a call and say, hey, you need to get a PCR test. But again, I'm, I'm struggling to understand what the liability is in that context, because we're not doing diagnostics. We're not saying if you don't, if we don't call you, you're negative. We're not saying any of that. So what exactly is the liability? That's, that's what I don't understand. It seems like if someone misunderstands us, that could be a possible thing. But then we failed in our documentation and our waivers and our, in our educating community, which I don't think we're going to do. So I don't find that liability argument terribly persuasive.
I wonder, what is the liability for an outbreak in a classroom when we've decided to go in person? Back to me, the insurance companies have said there is no protection for us. So I find that equally troubling.
Well, much more so, I think.
I just don't, I don't see how making a reasonable approach, as Jeff has said, the document says the screening test only. I don't, I don't understand.
People have the right to see you for whatever reason they want and you may not.
It's going to be, you know.
Well, if, if we're not insured, then any, any legal costs, whether we're vindicated or not, which will be there.
Correct, which means it comes, so the legal fees come straight out of our pocket instead of out of the insurance company.
That, that works both ways though.
I mean.
Yeah, it does.
If someone sues us for forgetting COVID.
But that's, that's all I'm saying.
That argument is not one-sided. It's, it's equally well on the other side, right?
Agreed.
So, so we can't make that argument, say, if it's not going to be, do it. I mean.
But we can also have an outbreak if we do this testing.
Absolutely.
I mean, if sixty or seventy percent of the population are the only ones doing it, there's still thirty percent out there that's infected. And so I.
Not infected, but potentially.
Well, this is, again, I, I need to parse words on this again and again, but this is why in August I caution that, you know, if we're closer to one to three percent positivity rate, that is a safer approach to in-person learning than waiting. And now we're at 7.2%. I don't understand why making a reasonable approach to provide a screening test, you have to, in my opinion, make best efforts to, to want to do the in-person learning, make it as reasonable as possible. And this is a reasonable thing to do. You've all decided that you want it to go in person. You know, this is, in my opinion, this is reasonable. It's not perfect. It's not a PCR test, but it's a reasonable approach to keeping these high viral asymptomatic cases, or at least making people aware that it's a possibility. That's where I stand.
And, and I'm not disagreeing with any of that. All I'm saying is the face masks, the social distancing, the hand washing are effective in fighting the contagion. And if you look at where the spread is happening, it's where that isn't happening.
Well, exactly. As a parent, I have personally seen many instances, you know, even our own property at school where students are very packed tightly together. And that adds to their fifteen minutes of exposure.
I guess the thing is, we're really not having, there's no doubt. So.
Right. My, my comment was just this. Even if we had an agreement to approve today, it's not starting tomorrow because we're still, understandably, D102 does not have the capacity and like, there's still steps to be made. So there's no slow in the process. So my recommendation would be if we have something that we think is going to be done Monday, then we schedule a special meeting for, like.
I'm totally a favorite.
I don't, I think we're arguing something that is not necessarily meant to be argued because, I mean, we're all, we're all pursuing the same goal potentially here. There was consensus on that. So there's no point in arguing it. Even if we had something approved today, we're not starting tomorrow. So we're just giving some time for the, the legal part to be up to speed so it all goes together. So I don't think anybody's like stopping the process here. I think it's, we're still moving forward.
Right. And that's how I started my statement is, I'm not saying I'm reversing course. I'm saying I'm not comfortable in the current, right now.
Right. So our lawyers right now reviewing this are not slowing the process down. There's no reason we have to approve an agreement today.
Correct.
Just because we have a board schedule set up.
You can't not approve these agreements, of course.
Right. No, so my recommendation is, why don't we just plan a special meeting if it's well before the November 4th meeting?
I agree with that.
That's fine.
Like, that seems like a great alternative.
Do it on Zoom.
Yeah, depending on.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see when, when the agreements come back or when, yeah, when it's ready.
Through this conversation, I was just looking at D105's board meeting and they've been talking about this since mid-August. And they just enrolled, started in October just last week. So it's taken a process. Their minutes aren't enough for everything because they haven't been approved yet, but I'm sure they've had the same conversations.
I do appreciate though that at least some other districts are going through it first and we have a place to look at what worked and what didn't for procedures. I'm saying go about not that they're figuring out the kinks about procedure. I, you know, I totally agree with you.
I just think we're, we're still moving forward. I think I mentioned to Dan earlier, just boards, Board of Educations aren't set up to be flexible during the pandemic. We have a, you know, very specific process we have to have. If we need to add some flexibility here, we add a special meeting. That's, I don't want to prove something before our lawyers and administrators are comfortable with it.
That's not a question. No one's, no one's arguing that we should because we have nothing to approve. That's, that's the only question.
There is nothing to approve now, yes.
Right, of course.
But I, I think just to what, what has been said though, I definitely, personally, I would feel better the more that we're able to flesh this out and have something that that's, you know, understanding the scope of it, the scope of the agreement and the cost, that would make me feel better about a vote one way or the other. And I definitely, I think that's, some of that has been said here tonight as well by others. All right.
One more question.
Go for it. We're holding up your press though. Come on, man. I can't wait to get to the Press Plus stuff.
This has to do with a document that you actually attached for the consent waiver. I just, it was just, it was more of a general question. I know when we were going through the policies, sort of going back to the hybrid model, we were talking about the COVID test, a negative COVID test wasn't necessary to come back to school after fourteen days of quarantine, even if there was a positive test. However, we're saying here that a negative test is needed or a physician approval is needed. I guess why are we having, why is that different between what we like?
Well, I, I'm not sure it's different than what's in our guidance documents from the public health. I'm not sure which section you're reading specifically. I know, I had, I think I bespoke because I had hoped that somehow this would help us get kids, keep kids in school. Like, we have a good number of kids right out on quarantine because they have asymptome, they fail their symptom checker. I think this really is not intended to be used for that purpose. It's really going to, for a child who is, leaves school because of symptoms or, or doesn't come to school because of symptoms, their physician does have to give them an alternate diagnosis or they have to have a negative COVID test. That's IDPH's requirement.
And, and I just thought, even if they came back with a positive test, they had to come back with, it says here, like a negative test or an alternative diagnosis from a physician. I just want to make, I personally think a negative test is necessary. So I like this wording better than what was.
I think you need a negative test immediately after the positive.
Yes.
Well, no, it, they couldn't, it says in here, I agree to see the.
Which number are you reading David?
It's the, page one, second, one, two, three.
Fourth.
The fifth. It's like the, in the fourth paragraph, we encourage them to get a test. In the fifth paragraph, we tell them what they have to do. I, I just think our policies just are, I just think we need to have everything sort of consistent for the process.
Yeah. I think what would be helpful is, like I was saying, I think I said this maybe in.
So like the last.
There are some children that don't qualify, like David, there are some children that don't qualify for a test at locations because they only get it once. I would think that if they had a document like this from, you know, at least the screening saying there's a, there's a high potential or some liability that they have.
The policy.
My point is, they might be able to get the test.
Martha, I think it's the one, the one sentence that says, starts with individuals. It's basically saying, you're required to stay home and self-isolate until cleared during FDA-approved diagnostic test.
Which line is that? Where is this?
It's in the fourth paragraph midway through. It starts with the.
In the back or is it in the?
On the consent waiver form.
On the consent waiver form. It starts with individuals. So basically what David's saying is, right now, people have to quarantine for fourteen days. They don't have to get a negative test to come back to school, like through the IDPH guidelines, correct?
They do. They have to have an alternate diagnosis or an ADO test.
To come back to school?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure.
Yes.
If you have symptoms.
If you have symptoms, yeah.
Yeah, it's different.
But if you.
What if I, what if I test positive?
Yeah. That, right, you don't have a negative, if you test positive, you have to fulfill your isolation period of fourteen days.
What David's saying is this one sentence almost sounds like you have to get a test to come back, a negative test to come back. So I don't, I don't know if we just want to clarify the language.
Right. That's, that's all.
Something to clarify, yeah.
Right. Because one of the things we, we think we know, right, is that some people will not get a negative test result even after a fourteen day period of isolation. It makes them free. There's, you know, I think the phrase in Long Hall or people that have, you know, may still get a positive COVID diagnostic before. I think we've even heard of it. It was like up to a hundred days or maybe a hundred days. So no, so I have to go read it with a clear head. We're not saying you have to have a negative COVID diagnostic post-COVID. I mean, if you are diagnosed with COVID, you must fulfill the period of isolation.
Yeah, you could just take, when I read it, it sounded like you needed.
Yeah, it does.
Okay. I'll reread it.
I didn't read it that way the first time, but you pointed it out.
Yeah.
Because really, these tests are only impacting people that are asymptomatic. Because
if you, even if you're negative on this, if you've got symptoms, it doesn't, you still got to stay home. You got to quarantine. The only thing this is impacting is people that are asymptomatic. And I think there was something that said if you had COVID three months prior, you cannot participate. And if you had, and then if you come back positive, you can't And if you had, and then if you come back positive, you can't participate for three months. So I just, I hadn't really heard anything about that before, so I don't know if that's just testing, like.
Well, it wipes you the results, like people, if there's RNA, if there's RNA presence there, it will detect it. It's definitely like your rights.
That hasn't.
Right.
If it's offensive enough. But, but despite it's an emergency, do you think there is an issue with people that only have one symptom? I think this would be a definite help to the physician or the place you're getting a test. Like I was saying, not all children qualify for testing if they're under twelve. But to have this screening test might open that door to let them get tested faster and get back to school faster because it's a long wait.
I mean, I can use the example, some kids certainly, it's been allergies and if their physician identifies it as allergies, that they're sneezing and coughing.
Yeah, one of those, I mean, how many people?
Yeah. The other one's been strep throat. We've had a few cases of strep throat that have come through the, the school district. So, you know, that's another, could resemble COVID and they come up with an alternate diagnosis of, of strep throat, not COVID. And they have to stay home because of strep throat, but they, they don't have to stay home for four days.
And siblings don't have to stay home.
Right.
All right. All that talk and I don't think we have anything to vote on, so.
That's okay, but we're getting somewhere.
It's definitely good to have this discussion though, absolutely. I definitely appreciate everybody's thoughts and opinions on that.
Well, the next one will be fast.
Need to cut him.
So you just jinxed us.
All right. Well, moving on to more exciting items. Uh, we have Press Plus one oh five update memo.
All right. So in here, you'll notice there's one oh five, um, one oh, uh, one oh, um, three, uh, yeah, one oh five. And then there's one from one oh three. And that one oh three one is, if you recall, that was the policy regarding the board attorney.
That, that's actually a separate item. The one oh three, yeah, I believe that is. It's a separate motion.
Thank you, I'll, I'll put my glasses on now. So, um, so yes, so pretty much these policies evolved around Title Nine, um, new policy two two six five. And I did talk with the attorney, we got some clarifications on it. There were some things that I asked for to be specifically addressed. And based on the attorney's recommendation, pretty much leaving, most of it as is. We are cleaning some of it up. But based on their recommendation, on her recommendation, we're pretty much leaving a lot of it as it stands right now. So is there any discussion or does anyone?
Well, we should probably have a, a motion before discussion. Uh, let's see, is there a motion for that the board approved the Press Plus one oh five policies, policy two twenty-two, colon, two sixty, colon, do I, I'm not going to read them all. Has all these policies listed here as presented?
So move.
Second.
All right, and is there any discussion?
No, but thank you for following up with those lawyers about the Title Nine stuff.
Yes.
It's complicated, so I appreciate, I appreciate how you read.
Definitely. Thanks today for follow-up on that.
This might be more of a clarification, just from my own knowledge. Two two six zero and two, is two two six five like a sub-policy of two two six zero? It's like the only policy, well, maybe not the only one, but I'm not used to seeing them not ending zero. And they both read like similar but different, or titled similar, but like one of them is Uniform Grievance and it has all the Title Nine stuff. And then this other one is specific title, Title Nine, like, do they, did they go together or are we approving, we're approving both of them, right?
Right.
So do they, they fit together?
They all, they all fit together, right, yeah.
Two two six five is new, a new policy that I had.
Yes.
But they, they kind of, it didn't seem like there was, other than like the language and stuff, I felt like they were kind of the same thing.
They are, if, if, I have to go, I'm trying to find.
From the looks of it, you know, Uniform Grievance, I'd assume is kind of the overarching document and you're probably right, two six five is a subset specific just to sexual harassment.
Yeah, what's interesting is they name a policy, a procedure, I mean, you know, they, the policy is named as a procedure. Typically, procedures are different, but I think it's just given the requirements around this, the actual procedures are, are a matter of policy.
Yeah.
Okay. So the uniform one is for, I guess the way I took it is like all grievances with a specific additional wording for Title Nine. And then there's like an independent one specific to it. And then, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was under, I was looking at that correctly.
No, and most of these tie, all tie back to that two two six five.
Yeah, every, yeah. Everything else just seemed to be our common conversation about approving footnotes. Footnote changer.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi.
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber.
Hi.
Mr. Marhol.
Hi.
Mr. Miller.
Hi.
Mr. Mirahad.
Hi.
Mrs. Murphy.
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Motion passed.
All right, and secondly, so is there a motion that the Board of Education approved the Press Plus policy one oh three, policy two, colon, one sixty as presented?
So move.
Second.
All right, Dave, was there anything more on this one?
No, this, if you recall, this one was the one that pertained to the board attorney. And we just had the attorney add in essentially that they follow the ethical standards outlined. It explicitly states that now in the, in the policy. So that's pretty much the change.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Kleiber.
Hi.
Mr. Marhol.
Hi.
Mr. Miller.
Hi.
Mr. Mirahad.
Hi.
Mrs. Murphy.
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi.
Hi.
And Mr. Hunt.
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, next is new business discussion. Uh, and first one listed our district goals, next steps.
So, Dan, you want to take this, so this is just an initial discussion item, so typically, shouldn't say typically. Actually, we've done this differently, I think, in the five years that I've been involved with this. We've done, in terms of board goal setting, we've done more kind of open-ended retreat style meetings. We've done more formal examination of draft goals. I know Wesley, you referred to the goals, I think you mean in my contract. The contract, as we know, the board has goals, the district has goals, I have goals, each administrator has goals. The ideal is that they are all interconnected, they all identify the work that is needed for the district at sort of different levels of perhaps management or different responsibilities around operationalizing those goals. But here we are, right? It's late October already and as Wesley mentioned, we have many other things on our mind as we got the school year started. So that typical even August or July, August, even September timeframe was really taken up with other critical and urgent business. So really just wanted to check in with the board. I do have goals in my contract, I have set goals with each administrator already. We've certainly been talking about the, whether it's the finance and facilities work that we need to be doing, some of the work specifically internally that are continuation of some of the goals in our educational areas. We know that there is unique goals to just leading through a pandemic. We also know that we want to set a new strategic plan in motion this school year. So again, just wanted to, to check in with all of you and to get a sense of how you might want to proceed. You know, Dan, you and I have talked about everything from sort of, again, a special meeting or a meeting where we have sort of a dedicated time and opportunity to this discussion. Or asking me to provide a draft in which the board can sort of comment, you know, review and comment on. And again, we've done, we've probably done some piece or parcel of any of those over the, the course of the year. I think this was our year to get it completely straight and this was the year of the pandemic where everything sort of went out the window. So with that, really just, I think, Dan, not to speak for you, but I think we were both sort of thinking we wanted to just hear from.
Yeah, definitely.
Thoughts on that.
So what is a good way for us to set goals? I think, what I mean, as Martha mentioned, there have been different ways we've done it in the past. I think personally, I enjoyed the, the retreat that we had, what, probably two years ago in what is now the Central Multipurpose Room. And we had that discussion. I think that I enjoyed that discussion. That was something I personally enjoyed. I don't know, was, were there any other thoughts on that? Was, what is, what's a better way or what's a different way?
I wouldn't say necessarily. I, I concur with you, I did appreciate that and I do think that's probably how we should do something similar like that this year. And I'd like to have a discussion and come up with some sort of goals and then formalize them and then meet again and tweak them if needed, but I think that's, I'd like to approach it that way.
I think we should at least have a, a specific dedicated discussion around it. And even at minimum, if we just say we're going to roll over the goals from last year and maybe tweak them a little bit or put, put a little spin for this, this school year or something like that on it. I don't think it has to be anything, you know, super groundbreaking. We, we do have the strategic stuff that'll hopefully kick off at some point in time that'll kind of help us with that future long-term goal. But I think it's a, a good idea to at least get together and kind of talk amongst ourselves about what, what we do want to try to accomplish this year. And just by, when we get to the end of the year, we can say whether we accomplish that or not. That being said, it might change in three months or six months or might change in both three, six and six months, I don't know. But I think at least trying to find some time to just dedicate some conversation and just thoughts at a minimum on that is probably a good idea.
I, I like that too. I, I don't think, I think the meeting you're referencing is a very long, you know, like a longer retreat type meeting. I don't think in this climate, that's the best idea. So I would, I would definitely support getting together, but I think it would be great starting with a framework of goals that you kind of already, you know, as you're, you had said you had already made some goals for yourself and for your, like, so if you already have a framework of basic goals, something to start the conversation that we can review in advance, think of what we want to add so that we come into the meeting a little bit with some work done, because I just don't think.
Are we talking mostly about this immediate year's goal, like this one, first, a one-year goal kind of thing? Is that our one-year goals, not, not?
Yeah, like our annual goal.
Yeah, in this particular instance, I think we're talking about this year.
I mean, I think in, in the past, we, we've tried to get together in the summer to do that. Like you said, it hasn't always happened. So in lieu of that, I would think, I don't think a three-hour retreat meeting is.
Well, we're definitely far into the year at this point, or at least in appreciable way into the year. So that definitely could make sense for, Martha has some goals already set out for, for her staff. And that would be, that would make a lot of sense to bring those as a framework to build upon. In, in terms of, you know, if, if we're worried or concerned about being in a closed space for a long period of time, we could always do it over Zoom. Or, you know, kind of have a set, shorter duration for ourselves.
I, I ordinarily agree with the points you made, Dan, that was a retreat. And I agree with what you're saying, Wesley, it'd be good to talk, talk about it. But I'd also, you know, obviously this year is very different than any other year. And if we get through the year, like that'll be a goal, like that'd be. Get through the year.
That's goal one.
That's goal one, and that's like, that's goal one and goal two and goal three, and that's all the goals.
All right, so we're done then, right?
We're done, I think, right? There's no other goals.
And I think the point though is, we have to formalize something so that we can look back on the year and evaluate.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't know if there's anything more. I mean, there's so much in flux and something is moving and that's like, can we really?
I do think other things are going on.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I understand your point, Jeff, and I mean, getting through this year is like, I think it's gold in and of itself and that's probably just enough. But I do think we should at least look at what's going on.
Sure.
It doesn't mean necessarily we're going to get through all the goals, but at least we can maybe set the foundation that positive work will.
But even, even just tonight, I feel like we've talked about a lot of things that we've, we've mentioned in the past that haven't quite gotten to where we were, you know, want to do. Like, like the tracking of the, the capital maintenance and projects and that, like, to me, that seems like something we've talked about for years and maybe that's something we start to formalize a little bit. So like, I can think of a few things we've discussed outside of pandemic, so.
Yeah, you know, I think that, like, that, so joking aside, I actually agree with you. I think just keeping people safe, keeping the schools open and not having students fall behind, like that, to me, if that was our only goal, I'd be, I'd be fine, I personally would be fine with that. But I, I think there are, there are little things like that that we might, so I think, Jeff, you've done a good job of like bringing those to the committee meetings and stuff like that, little bits and pieces, but having a little more like focused time on some of those might be worthwhile or.
No, I totally agree. I mean, one possibility is that, you know, we could just allocate, maybe a whole meeting to, to this kind of discussion and say this, this is a, we're not going to talk about the subcommittees, we're just talking about goals, you know, at a, whatever the, whatever, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, especially in education, I know, you know, Angela and I, and Martha were talking, there certainly, we have, obviously have educational priorities. It is a difficult standardized testing period in the last year. So if you were to afford us a little more opportunity to form some goals about how we want to analyze post-pandemic. I, I might maybe request a blend of looking at Martha's, but maybe we need to come up a small number of goals that we need to make. Nothing overwhelming because we just don't have the time with the flux. Martha doesn't, I'm sure, have the time for that, but I might, I wouldn't mind a Zoom meeting or even in-person at a county meeting. I think that's a great idea.
So if people are comfortable, maybe in the interest of time, if people would be comfortable, I'm happy to present a draft. I know in some years, that's been a frustration, well, Martha, you already decided the goals for all of us. No, I want to present a draft. One, there, there's definitely some continuity pieces, right? There's some things we just didn't get to last year with our sort of abrupt and different end of the school year. And there are some, some things very specific to the pandemic, I think Wesley, you just, you kind of articulated them, right? I mean, we want kids to be academically successful, whether they're in remote or in-person learning. We want to maximize our safe in-person learning opportunities. We do need to protect the mental health of both our students and our staff. Right now, I think that everybody is fragile during a pandemic. And we want to keep, you know, even just the, the staff retention issue, right? And like, that, that's very real, that we have to make this, this way in which teachers are doing their work and principals and everybody something that, you know, is not just tolerable, but, you know, allows them to sort of, to, to sort of identify that the purpose in all they're doing it, keep people safe, people, people supported. It is, it is very different work this year than any other year because of, because of pandemic. And certainly, we know, we want to work at MTSS and we want to work in our social long-range curriculum. And yes, we want to bring a clear picture of our maintenance and, you know, complete our long-range facilities, the goals that we had identified. So you can see, they kind of, I think they are what we have been talking about. I think formalizing them, you know, putting them on paper, putting them on the website, communicating on the community. I think there's value in doing all of that. So if people are comfortable, I, I would, I would like to, or I think it might be a way to sort of just shorten, shorten a meeting even is to start, start with a draft of some of those ideas. And then I appreciate if people bring their own too, so if there's things that we just haven't thought about, hearing from everybody, unless that, that feels too limiting.
That, that would be my suggestion is if you could have it. I mean, I think yours is going to be more detailed than any of ours would be because you already know what all your direct, and I do think there needs to be cohesion there. Otherwise, you, your directs are doing something different than we're asking you to do and that's not going to work. But in the same vein, I think all of us should probably bring maybe like our top two or three or something, like you said, just keep it.
I would say no more than that, again, it'd be, you know.
Well, I think two or three for each of us and then collectively, we figure out the two or, yeah, but not every, yeah, exactly.
No, of course not, yeah, all fifteen.
So I guess everybody does.
Perhaps we time-box the meeting as well, would that make sense?
I'm sorry, what?
We time-box the meeting, meaning saying that, you know, we'll, we'll set aside two hours, two and a half or, or, I dare I say three, I don't think I'm saying three, but two and two and a half.
The time box is too large.
That way, yes, if, if the, what, you know, the time is filled productively and people, you know, have an idea of, of how much time they have left and how much against the agenda, what we need to move on to.
Yeah, and we can even do like a simple roundtable of like, Dan, what are your two things and why, you know, ten minutes or less or something? And then at the end, we just all say like, these are our three high level that we agree on and.
We each make a PowerPoint presented.
Full-blown, at least twenty slides, nothing less than.
At least a fifteen-minute presentation for each person.
Minimum, yeah. And I want to see animations and I want to see.
Extra credit for cat videos.
Or you can just write them down on a piece of paper.
Do you want to do it as a special meeting or do you want to use now November cow? I can tell you, we were already planning on the finance, facilities, maintenance, something Jim's really been working on. If it's November, it's super rare time to talk about student achievement because we usually have all of our IAR scores back. We are not going to have IAR scores, but we will have our state report card. And I know that something Angela has also been planning and preparing us to bring some student achievement conversations. And I know that something Angela has also been planning and preparing us to bring some student achievement conversation to the November COW. So again, I know you're all busy people, so I just have a sense of, you know, without time for it, maybe a special meeting to look at the intergovernmental agreement. We'll go raise 102 if it becomes ready next, next week, right? It would, that would be the, there's just one week in between now and the November 4th plan, how we aim.
It sounds like you have a full plate for, you know, lined up for the November, committed a whole meeting already. So maybe it doesn't make sense to do it then, but I don't know what's going on, you know, December, committee of all, I don't know if that's anything that's an option or.
You might make a nice cup before we break for the holidays to have a general plan. We've discussed, I think that would be a reasonable thing to do and not that we have to finish, but certainly make some ground before.
Well, I guess then my question is, are we talking, we're talking about single then, because then we're halfway through the year.
It's essentially half a year goal, yeah.
Right, and then if we're actually going to approve them, we're then talking maybe January, February, and we've got like a few months left before summer and we start talking this again. So I guess my question is, I'm just sort of trying to look at this, I mean, I, I don't mean to flip it, but the three goals that we started talking about that you brought up, like doing well, keeping kids safe and making sure they don't academically fall behind. I mean, is that something we should just like focus on exclusively and then come up with some more robust goals?
Right, maybe that's, maybe that's the idea is that just maybe conversation, you know, happens. It's not going to be so formal as maybe in years past because we're already so far through the year. But we can at least get priorities out there, what are the priorities of people, you know, and, and, you know, so that they're on the people's minds and we can kind of come to some consensus possibly.
What are the things we can get a running start on for the, for the next year perhaps? Or things that could be worked in, in the time that we have left in the year?
Sure, I mean, that's fine, I'm just sort of trying to like.
Yeah, I, no, I agree. I think, so then I, I do want to separate kind of the two components. I think the one, the district goal, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the district goals, like the high-level district goals is a public conversation. But when we're talking about like the dialogue around Martha's specific goals would be more of a closed session personnel thing, right? And even though your contract is public, like the discussion around that.
Right, my contract is public, my contract has identified goals.
Right, which is sort of the final state of the.
The closed session conversation would be my performance specific in those goals.
Well, a closed session is allowed for the board to coalesce around a set of goals. Last year, we had the IASB lady help us out and we've had other conversations, but I think it's been better, to be perfectly honest, in the roundtable format, that we did achieve the same end result. And a refresh and then just where we can go from here in the next, this year is what we need.
Yeah, the closed session for the board is a self-evaluation with IASB. And I, and in self-evaluating, I think you formulate goals around.
Which is what we do.
Yeah, so.
And agreement that we need.
Yeah, so maybe here's my idea is that I would share a draft, maybe not for a whole lot of discussion even at November COW so that there's something to sort of look at and begin to consider. And certainly I want to make it very clear that goals have been considered, goals are being addressed, right? And so some of the things we talked about that we want children to be successful, we want children to be safe, we want our staff to feel supported during this pandemic. Those are all things, those are pieces of work in progress. Some of our, you know, implementation of new technology tools and development of our, you know, financial overview of our maintenance projects, et cetera. Those things are, are in process. You know, I think it's, Jeff, I don't know if you just, sort of the conversation, right? It's the board feedback around all these sort of ideas that then enhance or add to it. I think that's very valuable and even if it does take us till December, I think it's still valuable because I think these things also, they kind of end up on the chart for strategic planning too. I think anytime that we have a chance to think long-term and think, you know, down the road is, is very helpful. So are people comfortable with that as a, as an idea of having a draft to sort of maybe take an initial look at sooner rather than later? And then more discussion to follow, whether that's November board or if it takes till December COW.
I'm fine with that.
I think, yes, that has addressed David's point, which is a bit more like just, we should be doing this sooner rather than later. Having a starting point always helps.
All right.
Thank you.
So moving on to last item here, Village of Brookfield requests for consideration over the crossing guards.
I'm going to take that one too. So the Village of Brookfield reached out just late last week or early this week, asking if we would consider a cost-sharing agreement with, with the village for their crossing guards. I think there are two crossing guards specifically that are in the Hollywood School Zone area, areas that are crossed formally. As you all know, we have a formal agreement with the Village of Riverside for, I believe it's seven crossing guards, seven different locations where the crossing guards are, are staffed. That's a 50-50 agreement with the Village of Riverside, except for the crossing guard that crosses students right at the intersection with Riverside-Brookfield High School. That's actually a three-way split with Riverside-Brookfield High School and the Village of Riverside, District 96. So this kind of follows that similar, similar format and just wanted to bring it up for initial discussion.
Just curious, the reason that it's coming up now and why it's never come up in the past?
I mean, to be very honest, the Village of Brookfield also shared that they were looking at their budget preparation and, you know, looking at some budgetary concerns. It's, it's interesting, I don't have the answer and I actually posed this to a couple of people. Is it some, many or most school districts that have agreements with their village partners around crossing guards? And I don't have the answer, it's somewhere in there, it's certainly some and it's maybe somewhere even tending toward many. I don't know that it's most, but it's not an unusual agreement to have. I know I was not here when that original agreement was made with the Village of Riverside. I think some of, I think Linda, Sherry, Jeff, you were all on the board at that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that my recollection was, I don't know if it's Linda and Sherry, I remember differently, but that this was something that was in the works a little bit before we joined. And I remember at the time, the board, at that time, I believe, had serious reservations about it because it seemed to, I think it seemed to us that crossing guards were a public safety police function, not a school function. So that the school shouldn't be maintaining or paying for crossing guards around the village in different places. But I guess, for whatever reason, we approved it. But I guess now with Brookfield's coming back and saying they want a similar agreement, I totally understand why they would. But I think what we, you know, would be really useful is to look at, at least in our local area, like, you know, the feeder districts to RB, you know, District Comaric have a cost-sharing agreement with North Riverside. Does, does District 95 have a cost-sharing agreement with Brookfield? Like, it can't be the case that we are the only school district in the area that has these, these agreements and no one else does. So we really, I think we have to really be, you know, look at that carefully and say, hey, if everyone's doing this, then yeah, okay, it is what it is. But if we're the only district that's also funding these things, then I think that's, that's problematic to me, so.
Can I ask this, I mean, what about 95, are they, Brookfield?
They do not currently have a cost-sharing agreement with, with the Village of Brookfield.
Are they requesting one?
Is the, the school district is not requesting.
Is the village requesting this of all schools within their municipality?
What, what the village shared with me is they would likely be seeking similar agreements. With, so they're, the Village of Brookfield, I think, is in three different districts. LaGrange, Brookfield, 102, I did ask Superintendent there just today because I was on the phone with him for other things. And I think they're LaGrange, LaGrange Park and Brookfield. And I think they have an agreement with LaGrange Park, but not LaGrange and Brookfield. So, you know, it's very interesting to me that the school districts that are kind of multiple village entities don't necessarily have the same agreement with all the village entities. From anecdotally, what I, what I've sort of been trying to learn just recently, I know Comaric, they were going to look into it, but they might have an agreement with, they have a little bit of broad view. They might even agree with broad view, but not with North Riverside. I know, as you know, I was in River Forest School District for many years, they had an agreement to cost-share with the Village of River Forest. So it's, again, it's, it's certainly not a requirement and it's not all school districts that do it and it's not all villages that make, villages that make the request. I do find it interesting that we have it with Riverside.
I, I might have a maybe, forgive me, I didn't mean to interrupt you, forgive me if I'm remembering this wrong, but I do believe it had to do with also the request for the number of crossing guards that were wanted in Riverside because we were adding the request for parents because of the congestion and the number of cars and the number of incidents that were occurring. If they wanted more representation for our crossing guards, and so the village said, well, if you want that to happen, we're going to share. That was, I might be remembering that incorrectly, but I thought that was the case because we, I think it was like seven.
Yeah, it is seven.
Compared to the two in Brookfield. Like, because we did have some, you know, drive-through incidents, people, children and adults fearing for their lives. That's why his daughter has experienced with a drunk driver. So it's partially why it can't ever happen. We have some of the train tracks, we have a lot of dangerous areas.
I wish I had a really good memory that I don't, I don't clearly remember when we first got on the board and that conversation, but that does kind of seem to call something out that it was brought into topic because of increase of. I mean, in the end, I, I understand, like, I firmly support the cost-sharing because if the children weren't going to school, we probably wouldn't have crossing guards, let's be honest, the adults don't even. You know, it's not something we're providing for like, you know, just morning rush hour.
No, I lost my child, but the minute that drop off is done, those streets are, are much less congested. So I'm certain that it's our own traffic creating a lot of these scenarios.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure we truly appreciate, you know, the, the service they provide. It is, I would love to see like you as a, Jeff, just a analysis of in the area, what does what? Because, you know, yeah, we don't want to be the only one paying for it.
You don't want to say, yeah, hey, I wish I got.
But.
I understand they want it.
Yeah, but, but if we're, you know, if, if it's a situation where a village is having a budgetary issue and they're looking to cut crossing guards, I'm not a fan of that either. So, you know, while another, some town might agree to that and others might say, no, the board will help pay for it, you know, or the district.
No, I mean, I, I agree with you and I guess I just want to make sure that it's, we're not just being, I want to make sure that Brookfield's, we're not being singled out. So I would like to know, if you can sort of get some answer, whether or not Brookfield's going to be doing, is requesting the same agreement with other schools. I mean, I'm not opposed to it because you're right, wasn't to us, we wouldn't have them. But I don't think we should be the only ones who are being singled out at this point, so.
I think the other thing that's, that's unclear, right, that I'm sort of learning some about is that sometimes villages and school districts might have agreements around other things. It might be shared space, it might be, I know one of the LaGranger, LaGrange Parks agreements is that it also limits it up to a dollar amount. It's not a straight-up split, it's like, we'll contribute this much every year. So the agreements seem to vary, vary, very widely perhaps. I mean, you know, I certainly, Jim, with your help, probably take the, maybe the WSCAE districts, which really are mostly our geographic neighbors and similar school districts. And we could do a, a survey, you know, and ask what, you know, what agreements they may or may not have. And then I know Brookfield and Comaric, no, Comaric is part of that, Brookfield's not, but we could certainly have Brookfield as I know they're our, our sort of closest geographic neighbor and obviously the partners of the same village.
So Martha, does our, I don't know how our crystal field, does our community feel like we have sufficient representation from crossing guards in, in Brookfield? That we have what we need as far as the time and how many?
Yeah, I've never, I've never heard it to be a complaint. David, you live in that area, I don't know.
Yeah, I know when there's, I can't.
No, I mean, the biggest complaint's always been the first act.
Right, yeah.
And so, and so there is, and then like right from Hollywood that street, I mean, definitely very, very helpful.
And there's two near Hollywood, is that?
There is one and then there's one by the train, by the, by the train.
So I don't know how Brookfield employs, but, you know, I said, obviously we're, since we don't like consider the ones that are in the Hollywood School Zone and that's two, so.
And then you had said we are already splitting.
Part-time, temporary, seasonal crossing.
Yeah, I mean, they're all very hard time because they, they are employed to come in.
I mean, it's not a large cost. I think the bigger point is, if everybody, I guess, right, like, if, if you've got three districts and you're only asking, like, it's 20 bucks, but like still, if everybody's not paying in, like, why, why should we join, I guess, is.
Like present it to all the school districts.
Yeah, if everybody else is going to do it, I'm fine with it, but if we're going to be the only one singled out, so to speak.
Especially since we're probably the one with the least amount of crossing guards, I would think.
Probably, yeah. So we're, we're not really helping your budget.
Well, I think the other point is that this is a change. I mean, this is like, since the start of the school system in 1897 or whatever, like, didn't have these arrangements. It's a change, it's obviously being motivated by the fiscal state of the villages, they're looking for revenue. And so this, we have to be cognizant of that as well, you know, we can't be sort of seen as like, well, we're just the pot of money. And that's like, you know, our next, next year will be 100% or who knows, you know, so.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I completely agree with you. I mean, it's just with all the cuts that are going on, I mean, everything's sort of trickling down.
Yeah.
I mean, everyone wants to tax this part, but.
Riverside's, no, there's some issues too, so.
Well, maybe we can go change some parking spaces and then.
Yeah, there you go.
That's interesting.
I like that one.
That's the best idea I've heard.
Best contingency plan you wanted, David.
There you go. There you go.
Well, thank you. I will, we will, sometimes when we put out a survey, even though we bug people and call people, we'll, you know, we'll do the best we can to get as much data as we can bring around what other local districts are doing in terms of crossing guard agreements. And then I'll certainly circle back to the village and, you know, respectfully request that the, this is being considered with all of their school district partners. And, and again, like I said, there may be other agreements that I'm unaware of that are, are different arrangements, so. But I'm happy to, happy to look into it and bring you more information and it is a new business discussion. So it's not one that we need to take action on and if we need a little bit more time to think it through, I think they're thinking about it for their new fiscal year probably, which is probably a January fiscal year, not, not July like school districts.
So are we having a special meeting, I guess, about the, the IGA then? Are we waiting until?
I guess about when it's ready.
I think, yeah, that's much dependent upon the work that remains and what the status of it is.
Okay.
I would propose that we do, we do it on a Zoom meeting because I think, you know, that's just a very focused conversation.
Well, I know the staff did everything I should have done.
And we'd just be required to give the 48-hour notification, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can throw some policy in it.
Oh, this is fantastic.
Okay, next item, public comment. Has there been any public comment come in? All right, if not, future meeting dates, November 4th, 2020, Committee of the Whole meeting, 7:00 PM in the Blight Park gym. And that's, that's actual, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. November 18th, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Central Multipurpose Room. Hopefully we'll be ready by then, we're on track for that?
We're on track for that, but you never know, if we're surprised by either weather interference or something, I'll reach out to you. And it sounds like this is the preferred location right now, right, more than the Hauser Auditorium?
Yes.
Want to be here to hear everyone?
Yes.
At least from my perspective, being in the lower level and auditorium.
Right, let's see, so yes, so November 18th, the regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Central Multipurpose Room. Board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.